Okay. I'd like to reconvene our meeting and call the order of open session and we'll start with our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And there is no report on the closed session this evening. Motion to adopt our agenda, please.
Second?
Any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
All in favor of the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? There is five oh one. We have no recognition this evening, so we move to public comment for non-agenda items. Do we have any comments? Do you have anyone that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Can we move to reports and begin with our student representatives, and I believe you both have reports? You both have sections. Okay.
Hello, so the first few weeks have gone well for all the schools. Uh, last week was back to school night at LBHS. We had the professor from ASU come to talk on college essay writing. Um, I know Drew attended.
Yeah, um, I thought it was actually a really good experience to go hear from a college professor about college, the um, app- the acceptance essays, and I just thought that because typically you hear it from admissions counselors and stuff like that, and I thought it was an interesting perspective from a actual professor. Um, I, one of the, I've been to a lot of kind of talks like that, and one of the things that I found very interesting is that he gave a lot of new perspective on the actual college essays itself. Um, and I just think it's something that we should really continue moving forward because college essays are very different than what most um, high school writing involves.
Um, yesterday ASU went to each third period class and elected members for this year's student senate, which I will be running as the ASU vice president. Um, club, club roundup will be this Friday and homecoming on October fifth. At El Moro, they have conducted the PAL or peer assistant leaders interviews for the fourth and fifth graders. At Top of the World, it's back to school bonanza, a fun event for the kids, um, that raises money for the school is this Friday. Um, at Thurston, the sixth graders have returned from their science camp trip to Catalina. And also at Thurston, they have held, held the first of their TMS talks, which are weekly talks on meaningful topics. This one was on the importance of bees in our ecosystem. Um, as well as the first of their career talks. We have also picked up the annual PTA reflections art contest where students can choose, um, uh, to create entries for visual arts, literature, basic composition, dance choreography, film and photography. The deadline is October twenty fifth. That's it for the school report.
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Drew, I just had a question. Um, the professor that spoke, is he involved in reading the essays?
Uh, no, so he's the head of the English program at ASU.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Um, we have our bargaining minutes. Margaret, Christina, C A.
Um, good evening. First, um, I'd like to say thank you to all the site administrators, uh, C S C A along with Emma Lopez, our new labor rep, myself, uh, made visits to all five sites, so we were welcomed and allowed to talk with our various members, so it was great, and I brought cookies, so that always makes people smile. And the big cookies also, so that was, that was nice. And Elizabeth Phillips and I will be attending the C S C A health symposium, uh, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. This is our fourth year or fifth year attending, and we always come back with some very interesting perspectives, I shall say, about healthcare and where we are, uh, moving forward. And, uh, in the light of this is the end of September and October is around the corner, we know what October thirty first is, so programs will be coming shortly, and if you have the opportunity to purchase some of them to send to your fellow coworkers, we certainly appreciate it. All of that money goes towards our scholarships that are not only for our local, uh, Laguna Beach senior high school students, but those members that have students in other high schools that apply for it. So we've expanded it as I've mentioned before, so we look forward to your support. Thank you.
Further, Elizabeth, there.
Yes, so, um, I wanted to thank you for our first day of school breakfast. I was like, how everybody, where are all these goodies coming from? And then I get there and they're like, hey, Dr. Gloria came by and invited us for, um, to go over to the staff lounge and have some bagels and I'm like, oh, that's where they're all coming from. So everybody had it but me, and then once I got where, where this all was at, I went over there. So it was appreciated by staff and they did, um, and they were all like, oh, this is so great and how much. And after a great opening with our breakfast and, you know, the theme of the speeches and the opening of the school year, that was just another added, um, cherry on top, so thank you for that. And, um, since I will be serving on the insurance committee this year, I did go and attend a CTA sponsored insurance committee to sort of help me get updated on this, and I will also be attending one that you guys are offering too. Um, and then also I have a fun little story about from National Education Association in that they featured our very own Mark Alvarez in an article, um, because he is registering students to vote and so they'd asked me, is he a member of that standing, and I said, absolutely and always he is. And, um, so they featured him in the article and said, and basically just as one little part of it is, um, as an educator, Mr. Alvarez teaches students not only about the political process, but how politics are relevant to their own lives. And maybe that's why for the past fifteen years Alvarez has successfully registered almost every student enrolled in his classes. So it's really about getting involved and making it relevant to their lives, which is, you know, a wonderful thing for our seniors to leave with. And, um, so, and I asked, how did you find this, but? And I'm like, well, we actually researched papers and the local paper had done an article years ago and, um, had found that, so they reached out to me and then I helped connect them to, um, Mark, so. So that was a fun story and, um, it was very notable that he got featured in that.
Thank you. We have anything from?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. School research officer?
Good evening, everyone. Ford? Thank you. Um, so this has been a great school year thus far. A lot of things have been happening, um, focusing on safety, education, positive intervention, but some of the highlights that really stand out to me um, was September fitness six, we put on, um, suicide prevention training at across the street, the high school with Mrs. Aaronson, who was our, uh, our student support specialist. Uh, we taught five classes. We're going to continue that training we did last year and it was well received and I firmly believe it would be helped a lot of students, even families through, um, the things that, you know, they're going through. Um, and so I think that's a, a, a very good program, a very good course. Um, September seventeenth, uh, attended a PTA meeting at El Moro Elementary School, and this was an amazing meeting. It was a meeting of the minds. Uh, we had, uh, uh, Gloria, Chief of Police, Laura Farinella, present, uh, 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 Captain from the Sheriff's Department, uh, leadership from State Parks. To talk about campus safety, but more so the biggest, uh, problem was jurisdiction. Uh, in case you didn't know, um, El Moro Elementary School falls under the jurisdiction of, um, the Orange County Sheriff's Department. So whenever there's a call for service, um, a, a deputy would be dispatched and the police PD would normally respond if there was an emergency. There was a huge discussion that took place and I'm happy to announce that, that within the next two months, uh, El Moro Elementary should, uh, Elementary should fall under our jurisdiction. So there's an inter-jurisdictional agreement that's being made and that couldn't have happened without the, the, this discussion, the parents raising these concerns and our leadership listening to that, so I'm happy to announce that. Uh, right after that, I attended a PAL, uh, a PAL, uh, interviews at El Moro, and that's our peer assistance leadership uh, interviews. I have a lot of kids that went through. Um, it's pretty interesting when you can watch elementary kids interview for a position. Because I, I, I honestly say that they do better than some adults I've seen interview for jobs, so, uh, some came very well prepared. On September twentieth, we had a fallen off officer's remembrance at Laguna Beach Police Department. Uh, student Gabby Denny, she's a senior at Laguna Beach High School, um, she came and, and, and sang the national anthem. It was amazing to hear her uh, sing, uh, she sang it hard and spirit, her voice was truly built, um, and she made that ceremony, um, well, um, worth it for everyone and really helped our officers to deal with our losses that we had, um, of police officers in Laguna Beach. September twentieth, uh, I assisted the ASU at the high school with their homecoming reveal. So the reveal was rodeo. And so they asked me, because I always know they help the kids out, of course, they asked me to partake in, 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 uh, that reveal. So they made me a horse on a broomstick and gave me a cow way, had, had it answer on the campus during lunch. So I thought it was a pretty funny thing to, to, to get the kids laughing and keep them happy. Uh, September the twenty first, this past Saturday, I hosted a, uh, uh, club leadership conference. Uh, there were many, many organizations that were part of this. It was Waymakers, uh, Mission Hospital, uh, uh, Willis Prevention Program, the National Council of Drug and Alcohol Prevention, and, um, our staff member, Mindy Hawkins, Laguna Beach High School. Uh, we taught leaders from, um, two different schools, Laguna Beach High and Sacramento High School. We had a total of twenty, uh, four students who attended and they were all leaders, um, on campus, and we taught them strategies to help prepare, um, events and campaigns on topics that they were passionate about. Some of the topics that were discussed that these students were passionate about was the vaping epidemic and mental health awareness. And so we gave them some strategies to help them really pursue, um, those, those concerns and really address them on their campus, uh, campuses. That's it, uh, with the exception, there's so many other things that I do throughout the day, a lot of intervention, a lot of mentoring, um, security checks, but those are the highlights for this past couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Uh, it sounds like you're really going to bug me on which I already did that.
There's a lot of other, uh, plans that I have, but you know, it's for planning stages, but, uh, we'll have more important next important meeting.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
For members of the.
Mr. Eric? Um, School Power Endowment, they are still in good financial shape. They know what they're doing. They're looking at meeting every other month now, and, um, I think that's, will probably work out really well. They were grateful that, uh, while we talked to them, that they paid for the fingerprints for the mentors and they really loved hearing about that. Mr. Morrison did a great job talking about it, and they also gave Mrs. Lundblad a lot of compliments for being so organized and really let people know what was going on, so great for both of them. I, uh, also, like with Mrs. Fickers, attended the El Moro Safety. I was asked by some parents to come after having worked there. And, um, Amber Awfield and some others were coming to come speak here tonight, but they're actually speaking in city council and they thought it might be a little rush to get here. But I asked Amber to email these, her information, which I hope she did, and, um, for that. And the state of the district, we attended, which looks like we're going to hear some of that tonight again. It was, it was a good presentation. Now, it's too bad that there weren't more parents there, I think less than twenty, but it was a good presentation, so thank you for that.
Um, I didn't attend anything, but I did go to Dr. Jensen's lecture on college, uh, applications and essays. And I just wanted to celebrate that idea that we have more opportunities for students to go because parents and students will get little nuggets out of what works for them. I thought it was really excellent, and then he spoke to all the classes all day, and I know that there were some kids in those classes and they really enjoyed him. And it reminded him of kind of what high schools are about in time, and so I thought that was really informative, so, um, thank you for that. Sit.
I also. Oh. I also attended Dr. Jensen and he was a fresh perspective. And he really, um, summarized some of the one things, all the, your essays showing how your attention, how you will stay wherever you're accepted and how important that was in their stories to share that. And I thought that was a nice fresh perspective. So. And, um, I thought you all attended as well. And then I also, the community coalition presented at the city, the city hall with two statements.
Yep.
Um, and hopefully our ordinance will come back around dating. And then I really have loved Parents Square. At all four school sites, you see Parents Square, everyone's using it. I, I love that information.
Yeah, it's really great.
It's so easy to find. And then congratulations to Dr. Gloria, you're being selected for the superintendent, to go travel and involve other superintendents and share what we're doing here. Um, and thank you for spending over an hour with me in forty two hours, answering all my questions, but, uh, I appreciate it.
Okay, we did have a C S C A meeting, right? Oh my god.
Yes.
I saved that for you. I'm so sorry. I was going for my calendar, my, my, I apologize. Jan, do you take that?
We did. It was a, that used to be our, the College and Career Committee, and we had a good meeting and, uh, the director was not in attendance, but her folks all handled it very well and it was, um, just the, it was a normal business meeting.
Yeah.
The, uh, Dr. Olman had his, a really big crowd at, um, back to school night at the high school, which sometimes that falls off by the time parents get to the high school, but they get a, a, a very, uh, efficient presentation, a general presentation in theater, and it was, and people were having a hard time finding a place to park. It was really, uh, well attended and a lot of very, a lot of, yeah, a lot of enthusiasm by the staff members in their classrooms presenting to the parents. And, um, that's, it's just great to witness that. I also, as I mentioned, went to that El Moro PTA meeting with a safety presentation, and it really was, uh, we had a lot of folks come and present, uh, from the Sheriff's Department and from our local police and fire departments and our district, our district presentation, and, uh, Mr. Duddy's presentation from the school site perspective, giving a historical perspective of what we have done here. And it is October that's coming more of a presentation here, an update on the safety. And we did, um, have had a good communication, and Amber also made a presentation at, uh, at the PTA meeting, which was a good presentation. And I think it's, I think we, we've reached a point where people realize that it's, everybody has that best interest at heart. And it's just a matter of getting the, uh, the groups together and as we did with our current SRO, reaching that point where we can move forward, it's, everyone really has the the interest to keep the schools as safe as we can, and that's, uh, the central, the central point.
I, I did, uh, go through the conf talk also, and I, what really struck me is that there are so many initiatives that have been placed, so that we really are, it's not just continuous improvement of lip surface, I mean, we are really changing things and adjusting and making sure that we're providing the most current opportunities for our students' education, they cross the board, and I, it really stood out because there were so many things presented to the parents there that we are doing in this district, and it was, uh, it's good to see that, it's good to have that report, so it brings back to us, uh, that sense of what we do is happening out on the campuses, and it's just, uh, a lot of opportunities for students.
Gloria?
I'll save my report for the update.
Mr. Jensen?
Same.
Same. Mr. Jensen? Okay. Uh, we have a presentation from the film on, uh, high school and we started the year, I believe this is the first one, right?
Yes, the general update.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Hold on, Jason.
Is it okay if I, if I'll stand behind the podium?
That's okay.
Promise. Ask the filmer, if you guys want to see you, otherwise it's weird, you'll fall near or hit it.
No, just sit back, just a little bit.
Okay, sure. Awesome, thank you. Um, I thought I'd take some time to share a little bit about our journey through WASC. Um, it was a thing that we completed on, as of November of last school year. However, I feel like there's a lot of, uh, redundancy lost in the process, uh, just for the, the general person out there that, you know, knows we had an accreditation but doesn't know what it really entails. And it aligns with the work that we're doing currently at the high school, so, um, basically, we had, uh, a reflective process that really shows us, um, what the expectations are in the WASC process, and that is typically a five to six year cycle. Um, I look at it as a five year cycle because of the actual WASC year of accreditation is where you're really kind of putting the rubber to the road. But it is a very reflective process that involves students, parent and community input. Um, and it, it re- it really involves, uh, staff and teams of educators to reflect on practice and refine the work that they do, uh, for students. So, it's definitely, um, to me, it's an ongoing process. It's not something that, oh, WASC is done and then we forget about it. It's one of those things that's kind of always on the forefront for us as educators. Um, and it really, I like the fact that it challenges us as a school community to, to take on different perspectives and understand the needs of students, the needs of staff, the general needs of preparing students for life after high school, which is the objective of our district as a whole, but specifically at Laguna Beach High School. Um, the WASC process really contains these five areas, um, and they are listed as such, A, B, C, D and E. Um, and it starts with really evaluating a school's organization, vision, purpose, governance, leadership, staff and resources. Um, and really what that means is, do we have ample systems in place, procedures, meetings, platforms for us to understand policy and procedure, but also drive decisions on policy and procedure and what we deliver to students most importantly. Uh, standards-based learning as it relates to curriculum, do we have relevant and meaningful options for students? Uh, we have plenty of college and career, uh, prep classes for students, but we also have, um, a lot of things that are driven by student vision and voice. Um, and one example I can share as a recent development would be our medical corps class. That was a, that was a need that students came to me about during the, uh, last year's, last school year, and we reached out to our, uh, C C A, uh, provider and asked them for opportunities to have that integrated on our campus so that we can expose our students to more coursework that's interesting to them. Um, and we were lucky enough to have, uh, two sections provided, one within the bell schedule and one outside the bell schedule on our campus that students can attend. And that was because students took the time to, to show an interest, come to me. We actually, it was a really, for me, the process is always more than the product, and it was a really important process that students went through to talk to me, you know, old man principal, and then also I set up a meeting with them and C C A to talk through what I would have otherwise done myself as a principal, um, so that they could be at the table to discuss the, and, and understand the process of the things that it takes to consider adding a section within a bell schedule, especially a bell schedule like ours, where the consistent period would not be at the same time on a daily basis. We lucked out, we got a, we got a, a retired medical professional that was very flexible with her schedule and very eager to work with our students, so. Um, that's just one example of many. As it relates to standard-based curriculum, I could also talk a little bit about concurrent enrollment opportunities for students that we've developed through a recent MOU with Irvine Valley College that gives our students, you know, uh, college level courses and college level credit. Um, but it, again, the, the standards-based learning as it relates to curriculum is really about student choice and selectivity. Um, it's not that they have to do everything on the menu of, of services that we provide, but it's about them having options and choices and sometimes wanting to take everything, but also making the difficult choice of prioritizing what's best for them at that point in time. Sir, uh, standards-based learning as it relates to instruction really comes down to how our staff and team of educators look at how they deliver the curriculum. Um, and we've asked and challenged our staff to be very reflective on that, and we've developed essential learning outcomes in all of our core areas and all of our courses that we offer. But we've even taken that a step further, and we've challenged each other at Laguna Beach High School to talk about what that looks like in a classroom. So we have classroom look fours when we're out walking around visiting classes, and those classroom look fours often align with certain specific practices that teachers have identified within departments. An example of that would be, um, you know, I call it academic noise when you walk into a class. It's not always your typical stand and deliver lecture, but oftentimes you'll see students interacting and really having, um, high-level discussions on topics that a teacher has delivered to them, but isn't going to lecture on. Um, standard-based learning under assessment and accountability is really taking into account, do we have an effective arsenal of ongoing formative assessments? Not something that's going to provide an autopsy of a student's performance, but something that we can look at, see how they learn and see where we need to fill in, uh, the, the valleys and, and celebrate the peaks in their learning. Um, so school culture and, uh, student support is, uh, basically where we really evaluate how we support students in the process of their learning. Um, not, not only it relates to the academic, uh, learning, but also just socio-emotional development and support in that way. Um, I'll share a little bit here about the process in and of itself. Um, the, the, the work actually happens obviously before the visit takes place. This particular visit took, took place Sunday, November fourth through Wednesday, November seventh. I remember, um, I think it was week nine of the, the NFL, and I remember it, it was, uh, Rams played the Saints because I remember watching it in the library, waiting for people to come in, and I remember the Rams lost. Uh, I don't know why I remember that, I don't even know why I'm sharing that right now, but I'm, I'm putting it in perspective as it relates to, we start the work on a Sunday as a, as a staff, but before that, we've had a pre-visit with the WASC chairperson. The pre-visit takes place sometime in the summer. Dr. Gloria was good enough, as I transitioned into Laguna Beach High School, to ask for an extension of this process so that I could be there uh, for a little bit of time before we actually went through the process, which I'm, I was kicking and screaming like having wished that it already happened as I got there, but I was very thankful as we went through the process to be a part, at least for a little bit, of the, um, self-study process. So on that Sunday, they come in, but prior to that, as I was saying, is there's a pre-visit. That typically happens in the summer of a pre-visit that happens in the fall, so we had a pre-visit with our WASC chair. We talked a little bit about, uh, me being a new person, we talked a little bit about what I read within the self-report, which is about three hundred pages, and, um, what we were expecting as it related to their visit. So a team of about, uh, cis people on the committee come to our school. They start interviewing and talking to people on Sunday evening. Um, those people are stakeholders i- in the process, which means that it's involved, it's, uh, starts with our department chair people, our students, our staff at a variety of levels, and also members of our parent community. And they started asking about input, perspective, vision, where we want to go as a school, and it oftentimes as a, as a district, especially a, a, a district of our size of one high school. Um, and the remarkable thing, uh, by Monday afternoon was we all sat down because they circled back with the district, um, committee on day two, because they want to check in with them and share the process and procedures. The remarkable thing was that we had a really strong alignment in student, staff and district vision and purpose and goals as it related to the work that we had done and where we wanted to go. It was, uh, being a chairperson myself on a variety of WASC visits, uh, that is kind of a remarkable phenomenon, and I'm, I'm kind of proud to share that with you because it means that while oftentimes we're faced with frustrations and challenges in the work that we do, we are aligned in our sense of purpose, vision and the ultimate outcomes that we want for our kids. And that's, I, I think that's a, a really remarkable thing, and it was remarkable enough, um, that the committee really wanted to share that with us. So that happened by Monday, so we were feeling really good about our, our three and a half day visit. And they start on, on Monday, the first day of instructions, they go through and obligate themselves to visit every single classroom. So they visit every single classroom, every committee member in one way, shape or form has seen all the classes on campus happen, even the ones that are after hours, even the ones that, you know, happen, um, kind of at random points in time of the day. They made an effort to go see athletic programs that were going on at the time of the year. And they really evaluate and, and assess how what's written in the self-study report aligns with practice, and it poses either a lot of affirmation, but oftentimes it can pose more questions for us to consider as a staff. And that's just typical part of the cycle, which I really appreciate too, because as a new person coming in and at that point in time, the beginning of year two, it really helped us drive a lot of the work that we have on the horizon. So that leads to results. Um, there are areas of growth in the results that they deliver to us, and there's strengths that they deliver to us. So here, you can see some of our, our areas of growth, and a lot of the recommendations for growth areas were already work that the district board and our school have been, uh, uh, taking under consideration, specifically Specifically, a school calendar, they challenged us to look at our current bell schedule at the time and and how that could be impact impacting student learning and whether or not we could improve that. Um, how we use instructional minutes, you know, everything from our student-directed learning period to advisory. And were we maximizing that time that we had in a window of a school day? And then also teacher effectiveness in classrooms based on what they saw as it related to practice. Could it be more consistent? Could we find value in having aligned practices within a department, across departments? Um, and then also, they noticed at their time of visit, the amount of time that teachers had outside of a classroom for professional development and really assessing whether or not that was useful time spent out of class away from students during school time. Um, so that really drove a lot of what we looked at, we were doing currently and how we could make improvements. Um, it also talked about in increasing student access to supports. So again, when students have a selectivity uh problem with going to S D L or not because it can't be their choice, are they really getting built-in essential help if they need it? Um, it really, that really led for us personally, a a revolution around the topic in our bell schedule and and building that and where we have intentional time where students are a part of a tutorial that's attached to a class. That means that regardless of the air, the level that they're learning in that class, they'll have at least some dedicated time to either excel on their own or get remediation if they need it. Another aspect of our growth was a sys- systematic process that really evaluated the work that we did. Um, they, and I'm sure a lot of our teachers would agree, felt like we were doing a lot, but we really couldn't articulate the amount of things that we were doing and for what reason. So we were, we've really been conscientious about implementing a process and evaluating our current practices and what we can stop doing immediately, what we need to take under consideration to continue or quit later, and then really what new developments we can provide to help us be a better organization. Few more, couple more areas of growth were um really along with systematizing the work that we do is developing a process for analyzing the data to drive those decisions in the work that we do. And also, like as I've already kind of highlighted, developing and identifying uh common instructional practices and language that will help us with the instruction that we deliver to students. In our strengths areas, we have a a lot of things to celebrate. We have students that are involved at school outside of just their classes. I think uh parents in the room can attest to how involved our students are in clubs, athletics, other organizations that are semi-affiliated or fully affiliated to school, but not necessarily directly related in coursework. Um, I'm looking at a parent whose kid has nine classes in this, I think eight or nine, that she's, she's amazing, like she's really kicking butt, and that's a technical term. Um, integration of technology in the instructional program, very heavy on technology. But the nice thing for me to hear as a principal, because I was concerned, I'm, I was concerned coming into it one-to-one district where students have access to a specific piece of technology in their, in their learning, is that we use it in a very value-added and effective way. Because I have been at schools where we have an abundance of technology, but don't appropriately use it. It almost becomes a distraction in a class. We're very good as a, a team of educators to use it as a value-added, effective approach to our teaching. I'm really proud of real-world experiences embedded throughout our instructional and course offerings. Um, I think first and foremost in the work that we do, it's important to listen to students and what their interests are and what their needs are as it relates to future employers. And by future employers, I don't even mean, you know, after-college employers. I mean, people that want to employ our high school students currently. And oftentimes that's, are you a self-starter? Are you personable? Can you work with people? Can you have, can you complete sentences and hold a full conversation with an employee or a customer? These are all things that we embed in our coursework, and I think we're very intentional about doing. Um, and then we also really do that the, as it relates to newer courses like our A D R course, where we're giving students an opportunity to really work in specific areas or professions that will give them challenges and practical experiences. Um, obviously, staff support and promote student choice. I I would hope that if you talked randomly to a hundred students on our campus that they felt like they have a voice, not only in the classroom, but as it relates to how their school culture exists and how they can improve that. Um, and another thing that we're very happy at about and continue to improve on is uh student-staff connections on a, on a, no- nothing to do with curriculum, but just on a personal side. Um, because we all know that when students are personally connected to the adults they work with, they're going to work harder for them, and I think they're going to easier, e- have an easier time finding relevancy in the the work that they're doing. Um, a lot of, of continued strengths here, obviously, we we live and work in a remarkable educational community with a level of financial support, but also per- parental support and school community support as a whole is pretty remarkable here. Having been in a number of districts, it's a, it's a really awesome thing to have the support of parents. And it's awesome, of course, to have the physical support and the, and then the greater school community. Um, we have a remarkable service in the College and Career Center where students are able to really uh tap into resources that they may or may not know about that will help them get to uh college or post-secondary option of their choice. We have a lot of supports as it relates to our socio-emotional development and supportive students, their health and wellness, discipline and attendance. We're, we're kind of trying to definitely take the time to teach students to build an arsenal of skills to navigate all of those challenges in life. You know, whether it's I have a, you know, an issue with a a teacher and I have to work through that or uh, you know, consequence for being not on, you know, being late on a school day or con- consistently late in a class. We want to help them, you know, we want to hold them accountable, but we also want to help them get the skills to be accountable to those kind of challenges that we all face in life. Um, and of course, students based uh are engaged in project-based learning. Um, again, I highlighted that a little earlier, but we just have an abundance of opportunities for students to really have practical, relevant experience as it relates to their learning and hopefully their more skill and professional development. So I'm very excited about that. Um, and those were basically the general outcomes of our WASC process, which drives our work. Um, and that's what we're doing now and continuing to do is going to continue to set us apart from a lot of other high schools and really school districts in our county, state and nationwide. Um, so we continue to focus with the process uh, you know, that I shared with you at the very beginning. Um, very reflective process. We have our highlights where we want to focus on continued options and alternatives for students, focus on refining and and in in and I don't want to say perfecting because it won't ever be perfect, but refining instruction and making it really appealing to students and relevant to their learning. Um, and it's definitely bigger than just about Laguna Beach and Laguna Beach High School. It's kind of a global perspective on that, in that process and and how we fit in as a global citizen in Indian, any industry or any profession or any focus that we may choose later on in life. And of course, it's always about working with people. And lastly, I finally found a shock emoji online, and I had to put that out there because it truly is. And we, we probably used the word stoked or I'm really feeling a stoke uh one time in a staff meeting, at least once every time we have a staff meeting. And we do want to, I would say, to speak Laguna Beach and South Orange County, we do want to continue the stoke in the work that we do. And um, I'm I'm honored and and appreciate the time that I could share this with you today. We're really happy um that we got a uh six-year accreditation um with uh an an opportunity to have a, a one-day midterm visit where we will really just have a pre-check-in halfway through our process, which will keep us honest, it will keep us focused, and it will keep us uh aligned with the work that we're already doing and and help, help push us to continue that process. So, thank you for listening tonight.
Questions?
I just have a comment that I I was the one who asked if you do this.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate the thought too.
And the first letter to the editor that I wrote was about WASC, which a lot of people don't understand. It, WASC is the Western Association of Schools and Colleges, Secreting Agency for the Western United States. It credits the U C system, C S U system, Stanford, USC. It's a biggie. And I'm one of the probably the rare people who read the report uh all the way through. Each statement you write, you have to be able to click on to it to see evidence that backs up the statements you just can't write. You know, we're the best at that. You have to show the organization what you mean by every statement. And you did a superior job, and I think the school district administration should all, and the community should just be grateful for what's going on here in in this district.
Thanks. We had a lot of great support with our staff. We, and now that you mentioned that, I'm reminded that we had, I was reminded that we had over two-hundred-and-sixty links within our living document to to, that went to supporting evidence of our claims. So she kind of made a joke of that. But she appreciated it in the work, because in the work that they do, they have to about really truly evaluate that, and it helped. So. Any other questions?
We had a meeting, we were in one of the meetings, and you had a team that was really looking, they, you know, not.
They were.
They were. She asked us some, some hard questions. But thank you very much for this. It's very, very important. Uh, we now have a public hearing. Uh, we'll open the public hearing uh to.
I think that's under the card, make public comment or on this.
Item fourteen and nineteen.
Yeah, isn't that?
No, this was under, um, well.
Or is that just his report?
It was one of the reports, that's the eleven.
Alright, sorry.
Sure, that's okay.
So the, open the public hearing to, this is to ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. And certification of provision is standing as aligned instructional materials for education code section six zero one one nine and six zero four two two, section B. The notice of the public hearing was posted on September ninth, twenty nineteen, and this will come under approval for Act nine of eighteen. So anyone wishes to speak during the public hearing? Seeing speakers and we'll close the public hearing. Uh, next is our consent calendar. Uh, are there items that we're going to pull off or? Who said it? C. C. So public comment on the consent calendar.
Hi, Jerry Morgan. Um, I'm not really sure how I missed it because I walked in the door and looked at the clock so I wouldn't make note of it, and it was six oh four. And I missed, somehow missed a public comment and a whole bunch of stuff that I was kind of surprised that you guys got to that so fast, but. On the approval of the minutes on item thirteen A, I have a question. Um, because I knew that there was a special um, a special board meeting um that night on the, on the tenth. And the minutes reflect that there was two staff members present and only three board members. But um Victoria Weber being the second staff member, but she was not in closed session. Is that normal? Closed session, that you don't have somebody taking notes?
This is typically, it's not a closed session.
Okay, so is it, 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 it lists that you have.
This waiver does not, this waiver does not intend closed session, so that would be why.
Right, but this is not for public because it it lists that you have two staff members and three board members present, and two board members were missing. But then when you go into closed council, uh, Miss Weber's not in closed council, so, or closed session. So is that typical? Um, was it exclusive for this that was needed?
Yes, no, it's typical. It's typical.
It's typical. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. So I appreciate that. Um, and then, um, I'll wait for the next one. Thank you.
The, it's, the next one is not in consent, so I'm.
Yeah, I know, it's fourteen, alright.
So, um, Morgan, is there any other items to pull off? I didn't see. So I ask for. Okay, so we're pulling A one.
Yes.
Okay, and C. So then I would ask for a motion to approve, um, we have a one point of seventy seven, right? Yes, yeah, there is a here. So that'd be items A, two, and then B, and then D through O.
I lived.
Jim, and Carol's second. Um, we don't discuss this as a one, but we have a few more questions.
Not just a comment, say thank you on the contracts, just to put you through the contract was from the vendor information department.
So all, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Here's five O. Um, take item A, A one, September tenth, special meeting minutes. A motion please. Second. And uh, the three people that you vote, two of the sentences. So all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain.
Stain?
Abstain, okay. And, thank you. We have item C. Go motion on item C, please. Second. Mary, it's very.
I, I know we have a history of not expensing out-of-state travel for what, and we watch the budget carefully. And are we changing now? Now, is my question.
Over the past several years, we've changed that. Uh, we've sent people to, most recently Florida, uh, for a conference there. Um, Mr. Morrison has attended this, uh, two different locations. So, uh, you know, we've uh determined that um there are some national interests uh to send people to conferences that are not just local, you know.
Okay, so if somebody has a comment that they would really like to attend, that they think would benefit the district and it's out of state, then we would consider that.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Here's five O. Our next item, we have two, a couple of biggest items. Our first is a preparation note from the twenty nineteen for the school year, uh, Gloria.
Well, I apologize for uh for the repeat, for the two of you that worked.
Let me steer it now. You know, just go once.
Well, uh, I'll try and go quickly. Some of this is actually, uh, a lot of information you've already seen before. Uh, so it it seems kind of, uh, welcome back since we've been in session now for quite a while. But um, it is, uh, I think a good opportunity for us to kind of reflect on how things have gone so far this year. This is just a, I believe a highlight I mentioned um in our presentation. The lower left-hand corner uh was our student vote races, um, the sharing class put on. I was amazed that some of the votes had actually made it across because I wasn't thinking some of them were going to make it, and others uh as soon as they hit the water, uh, sort of disintegrate. But a great opportunity for our kids. Again, part of the reason uh our WASC visiting committee really sees that that project-based learning coming to life. That's a, a primary example of that. Um, the other corner where you see the, the bottom right corner, um, the uh forensics class and a lot of our Laguna Beach Police Department there. Uh, I think there were just as many uh L B P D staff there as kids. And uh, I kept hearing from the staff uh there that they were using that as a learning experience for themselves. Teaching kids, help reinforce uh the things that they needed to do. Uh, because thankfully, they don't have to do this kind of murder investigation very often. Uh, if you see there, there's a gentleman in the socks. Thankfully, you don't see that. We're all here to do that. But uh, you can kind of see his head there. But again, it's just a, a great opportunity. I'm so privileged to have the relationship we have with the police department and Chief Farrell and Captain Calvert and that whole, and that whole group. So. As you know, and we revisit this in the past and reaffirm that this is the vision that you have as a board for our students. And the mission continues to be, uh, and what I highlight is lifelong learning in a very interconnected world. Uh, we know how competitive and quick things uh are moving these days. Drew will probably have a job and Chloe will have a job that we don't even know exists right now at some point in your life. Um, we had it easy uh in many ways because the jobs were pretty static for a very long period of time, but now they move at such a quick, clear. We had it easy in many ways, because the jobs were pretty static for a very long period of time, but now they move at such a quick, clear. We want to make sure you are all prepared for that. Our ongoing commitments, um, and I, and I do jest, we did buy three years pens, and I think we're in our second year. But really, these are things that we want staff to know about. And I've heard from various principals and teachers and classified staff that they know what these three areas of focus are in this district and how the things that we're doing, those actions, those initiatives fall within those. And I hear a lot about it from Dr. Allman in his report. But I think if you go onto our campuses and you were to talk with staff, they will tell you that these are those areas that we're focusing on. So very proud of the work we've accomplished in these areas, and they are our ongoing commitments. Our current enrollment, top of the world, is right around five hundred and eighty students. El Moro's, about four hundred and fifty-nine, Thurston's at six eighty-seven, high schools at a thousand and fifty-five. We, plus or minus a few students, obviously, and this was as of, I think, about a week and a half ago. So we do get a period of doubt every slot, but it's about right, and we're right around projections. I think we're within just a, less than a half a dozen. So amazingly, we're, we're continuing to find that our projections are pretty much spot on. Now, obviously, they don't, not perfect in where the bunches of kids are all the time. But we are pretty confident that we're seeing those numbers come through, and it really allows us to be proactive in our staffing. Some recent accomplishments, again, I, I know you've, you've seen a lot of these, because we provide these in the weekly update. One of the ones that I added, so I did put something new in this slide, is at the bottom. In two thousand and eighteen, almost forty percent of our graduating seniors received a seal of aid by literacy. The county average is twenty-two percent, and the state's twelve percent. So we are far surpassing our, everyone around us as it relates to seal of aid literacy. I think that number's going to tick up a little bit. I think Good Chat mentioned he thinks it's getting closer to thirty percent this year. Again, we're waiting for all that information to validate, and that's again for our, our last year's seniors that graduated, so. There will be eventually a civic seal of aid literacy that we're, we're waiting to see what exactly that will look like. I think you have all sorts of seals all over your, the publics of when everything's said and done. But again, it's just a, a testament to, I think, our language departments that we have that go all the way down to our elementary schools and into our high schools, exposing our students early on to language acquisition. And, and our students continuing those academic electives once they've met that criteria for admissions, still continuing on and taking this higher level, Spanish, French, and Chinese classes. It's great, as I mentioned, to have a second slide of accomplishments. We have all sorts of ribbons, green ribbon, blue ribbon, gold ribbons. The, the El Moro is still pending, so there will be, have confirmation here this week. So we're excited, hopefully that will come through this week, is what we're hoping for. Again, as Dr. Allman mentioned, I think a six-year WASC credential is, is really something to celebrate. Knowing that process and how rigorous that process is, and as President Vickers mentioned, they asked some very pointed questions and they knew what they were looking for to validate, so there'll be a validation visit. And I always say that they did come in and they say prove it, and that's what the job is of the report and, and that visit. Again, Thurston Middle School being a school to watch designation, I think this is the second time, this is the reacquisition of the work that they have going on. And our No Place for Hate initiative, uh, you know, Mr. Levy actually just reached out to me again more recently, and we've been looking forward to having a conversation about our work with the A D L. And we have two national merits somewhat finalists who we will be hopefully recognizing here at our next meeting, so. Again, as Dr. Allman mentioned, we've had a lot of increases in our course offerings, as well as changes to the Thurston elective wheel. With staff obviously retiring, we've had to, and our declining of enrollment, we've had to look at some things a little differently at our elective wheel, really exposing a lot of our students in the sixth grade to more electives, allowing them to then start to select and become a little more specialized as they progress through their middle school time. We are looking to enhance our community communications, and with that tonight, there are two items on our board agenda. To hopefully wrap up our audiovisual system and our online board agenda system, Board Docs, which were being proposed that we engage in a contract with them. Thought exchange, which right now there's a thought exchange going on. Dr. Keller sent one hour of parent education. Parent Square, again, as a member of Norman had pointed out, has been, I think, a really quick way for that information to be sent out. There's an app that immediately pops up when you receive notifications of whatever it might be you're subscribed to. We are doing some superintendent columns in our papers on topics, we have done two so far this year. And again, kudos to Ms. White, she's not here, she continues to keep that parent mentor program going strong. And it's a huge asset to our district to have that group. You'll hear a little more about our capital improvement projects, you know, proactive school site renovations and the Okanagan safety upgrades in a part of this presentation, but also our next board meeting where we do a safety update. Every student, every day, we really set our mind to, and you'll see some data around our attendance this last year. Major improvements over the last couple of years in our absenteeism rates, chronic absenteeism rates. And this has been an effort that has been involving several different departments, including technology, getting involved and helping create a strong system for the sites that they really need to help them make their job a little easier. We have, again, our school resource officer, who has been just a huge asset to our students and to staff. One of the things that I really believe is important is teaching from strength, and that instead of students thinking what they don't bring into the classroom, focusing on what they do bring to the classroom. And you're seeing that as it continues to grow out. And we have been doing a lot of training at our elementary, middle, we have a few staff training at the high school. And I know that Dr. Allman has a plan about, he plans on kind of diffusing that out as well into the larger staff. We have our social emotional supports, again, our universal social emotional learning screening, which I, Dr. Phil will touch on as well in this presentation. And as you heard, some suicide intervention training for our students that we're working hand in hand. We have the S R O, Korn, Ashton, and our student support specialists. Relationships matter, the No Place for Hate, and I believe on our picture slide that earlier you saw, there's a picture of the student signing a pledge. Lot of activities, and the high school is a great example of that. I wish I could have been there to watch Korn ride around on a big horse. But you guys do a great job with school spirit, and it's been a work in progress, I know, for many years at the high school. And you continue to build on that year over year, so thank you for all your continuous work on that. And again, student leadership, they, we did focus groups, we're using some WASC focus groups, especially as last year. That was one of the comments I heard from the chair, was that your students really are open about what's going on at the school and really were clear that this is what the staff and student connections were really something that they knew staff were working at. And they spoke to that. Obviously, you two being through our student board reps, trying to find ways to continue to include your voice, student senate, which Chloe you mentioned. We have the student athletic advisory that is continuing to function, we have challenge success. Our A E R class, which Mr. Morrison will touch on a little bit more. And our C I C student reps, which is related to our special education student reps, so they're part of that, that committee as well. I'm not going to speak the whole time like I have to ask here, so I'm going to pass it off and let some other folks speak today.
Okay, well, we are physically sound, and we appreciate your support and focus in that area. We have to help you with your statistics, it's a number up there, a little over thirty-four million dollars. Our per pupil spending last year was almost twenty-one, twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's gradually increasing year over year, you see. Of our sixty-four million dollar budget, approximately fifty million of it comes from local property taxes. We continue to focus on organic, uh, trajectories. We also have a lot of, uh, single-use items such as utensils and plates. We make sure that they're biodegradable, because it's an opportunity to be environmentally conscious. We're increasing our options in nutrition program this year with more vegan and vegetarian options. We actually have training for all of our nutrition staff in August, so I'm excited to see what meals can come up with in there. And we're exploring, we're piloting a new breakfast program at Top of World Elementary School. It's only in its second week, so we're still compiling data, but it's been received fairly well so far, between forty and fifty meal, uh, one clock daily.
For the, the business facilities department updates, we had a very productive summer, we completed all of our routine maintenance activities. Those routine maintenance activities range from everything from deep cleaning of the classrooms to trimming trees, rehab of grass fields, change out of air conditioner filters, testing of our fire alarm systems. In addition to that, we did many special projects, including those special projects were our Okanagan facility improvements. Those came from the Orange County Intelligence Assessment Center, reports that we had done for all of our campuses last year. And we have made a commitment to implement all of our suggested mitigation measures, which we did learn from the Orange County Sheriff's. It's not typical for a district in Orange County, so we made substantial progress there with those items. And then, uh, here in this slide, we have a couple of pictures to highlight some of those products we did over this last summer. At Laguna Beach High School, we renovated the artist theater, the X tier and the interior. The interior included the breezeway and those restrooms, they have new finishes, along with new plumbing. At Thurston Middle School, we completed the door hardware rekey there and replaced the signage at the facility. That completes three out of four facilities, so El Moro, Top of World, and Thurston have all been rekeyed. And we are now working on the high school and the nurse office. At Top of World Elementary School, we replaced the kindergarten fence and access gate. You can see that in the center picture of the slide. Then over at El Moro Elementary School, we renovated the multipurpose room, included new roofing, along with the new vegan air system and interiors were placed on the inside. Looking forward, our next capital improvement project will be at Thurston Middle School. Maybe a quick update, we're in the middle of the design phase with an anticipated start of construction as early as this coming summer, twenty twenty. The scope of the project does include a modernization of existing turf field into a synthetic turf multi-sport field. As you can see in the picture here, the rendering. It also includes a removal of the two portable classrooms on the field. And we will modernize existing building space to house those two classrooms to create two new twenty-first century environments.
Okay, so switching our focus to instruction, we just wanted to briefly identify some of the instructional focus areas coming up for this year. First of all, you have multi-tiered systems of support, so we'll start with the first acronym. And that really refers to a framework that we're using to really talk about everything that we do for all kids. So what are the best practices that we've identified that we use with all kids? What do some or few kids need for intervention purposes? And we're really combining our efforts. We've had multiple committees focused on different aspects of M T S S, so the dyslexia committee, we started to talk about disciplinary, sort of practices, approaches, and really all of that falls under M T S S, really focusing on what all kids need to be successful. So that's really our, our big focus for the year. One of the mechanisms that we use to accomplish that is professional learning communities. And we did a lot of training and reorienting our staff around professional learning communities last year. And so that has not gone away, that's something we want to continue to improve and refine and, and focus on, it's a high priority for us. Also, when we talk about N G S S, that's the Next Generation Science Standards, and it's something that we've been working on for, for several years. This year, we're, we're moving forward with the high school pathways and how that might change as a result of N G S S. So you'll see a study session coming in October, in late October, on N G S S, to talk about the, the potential pathway changes for the high school level. And we have our elementary publisher's fair this week. They're looking at adopting new materials that are aligned with N G S S, so it, it is a big focus of our work this year. In some of the previous slides, you noted, noticed some things about strengths-based, you know, we're really focusing on student strengths and part of that development is really identifying our staff, staff strengths. So learning and leadership through a strengths-based model, we've been working on that for a few years, and we're going to continue that work this year. Career education, really excited, Kelly Shearer, who is our new career counseling coordinator, who did the Stronger Workforce Grant. She has been amazing, she's often running, she's already compiling and identifying new opportunities for us to participate and new opportunities for our students to expand career education, and her focus is really K twelve. She's really working on aligning our supports across all levels, so that every student has opportunities for potential career opportunities. And then finally, we identified co-teaching as another focus area for this year. You may notice that in many of our classrooms, you might find a general ed and a special ed teacher that are co-teaching day instruction. And in other cases, it might be two general ed teachers. We had refined some of our interventions at the math, for math, and we have adequate staffing to be able to have two teachers in, in many of those classes to provide additional support to students. So that's just something that we're continuing to refine and work on as the year goes on. And so next, I want Dr. Mayberry to come up and share some data highlights.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Mayberry, I'm the Director of Assessment in Conville, D. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to share a couple of important data slides that, that we look at on a regular basis. As you know, we have lots and lots of data to look at. Some very quantifiable and some not as much and observable, so we try to take a look at the big picture and slowly work our way down. This is one Dr. Roya shared earlier on chronic absenteeism. This shows the rate across the last three years for the four schools as well as the district. This is a good example where we really focus in on something. A whole group of people worked, helped bring these down, those are supposedly sloping down, that's a good thing, right? But this is chronic absenteeism, ten, ten percent of our absences, talking to parents, working with parents individually, working in larger groups, getting messages out there. Three years ago, we were above the county and state averages for this, unadmirable of both. So I suppose it's really exciting to see this continue to drop down to a level that we think is really important, because we always know the value of having the kids in seats every day. This next slide is our annual first C slide around E L A literacy and math. This shows the last five years for the district, you can see the percentages there. This is a good example of that continuous improvement, and we're working with different systems, like the M T S S or professional learning community, who are constantly looking at students. Now, a couple of things to know about this slide is that it's about half our students. It's not weighted evenly across grades, it's not every other grade. They're tested in thirty-fourth and fifth, so about half of upper elementary. Six, seven, eight, so all of the middle school, and then just eleventh grade and high school. So I thought half our students, but it is kind of weighted there in the middle grades. You could see that, the, can you roll over the last five years, we get to those, kind of like those eighty percent marks that puts us at or near the top in the state. Last year, you're, you're at the top of the county, and that was just, with that increase in the math, uh, in a year, which is not easy to do when you're already achieving a very high level, I expect that we'll be at the top of the county when those are eventually released. And then we also are looking at what areas we did, got a little deeper, so this is a good example of looking at some different student groups and how they're doing. When you look at this, this is P L A and math, you can see the actual number of students that were tested on the left next to the name. Looking at females and males, looking at Hispanic and African-American students, English learners, low, I think, low-income families. We look at different student groups, which gets us asking more questions, like what is going on here, what's our pattern here? Is this over multiple years, are there certain grades? But this is why we have listed a lot of the systems that we talked about earlier in there, how do we slowly drill down to find out where our students need the most interventions or supports. Another big piece of data that we look at a regular basis is around our advanced placement scores. This is one way that students can get college credits, but it's also a poor statistic around showing that kids are college-ready. And you'll look at this across the last five years, you see growth in the number of totally big students, but also number of exams taken. And then if you look to the right, you'll see the pass rate has stayed right around an incredibly high rate of about eighty-nine or ninety percent. So students are needing more access, and we're still needing a very high pass rate for this over the last five years. And part of this is due to more access to the courses, we're now up to twenty-one advanced placement courses, which is a. We're now up to twenty-one uh advanced placement courses, which is a very, very large amount for a district or size, a high school or size. Uh you can see there's a couple uh career sciences we've added recently, statistics, uh the art history ones that really allow kids across all of these kind of core areas that they might be thinking about when they go to college, um that they can have access to, they do this high-level college course work uh if you're interested in years.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, President Vickers, it's the members of the board. My name is uh Dr. Keller, and I'm the Director of Social and Martial Support, and I want to just talk to you about some of the work that we do kindergarten through twelfth grade, transitional kindergarten through twelfth grade in the area of uh social martial supports. Uh on the right-hand side, you can see here, this is our framework that we have for all students. And our goal is truly that students thrive now in school and throughout their lives. And so we think that these skills are really essential, and we try to infuse them in our daily instructional work with students. But also, we look to tie into our curriculum that we deliver in this area as well, whether it be second staff or previously administered Bobbets, Regalum, et cetera. So uh we want students to be self-aware, have self-management skills, know the management emotions in lots of different situations. We want to have uh strong self-efficacy, and that is a really important mindset for achieving and accomplishing goals in the future. And then we want the students to have self-management skills, uh be socially aware, I'm sorry, social management skills, be socially aware. And then um I think Dr. Alman talked nicely about about really being global citizens and how how can they see themselves not only as uh positive impact measures in their classroom and on their school site, but also in the larger community context. Um something we do that's really unique in California is we administer universal social martial learning screeners, kindergarten through twelfth grade. They have about eighty-five percent in total participation rate in these screeners. We administer twice a year. And uh we we have a teacher-administered screener that measures uh externalized and internalized risk on a student risk screening scale that we administer in kindergarten through third grade. And then we administer a strengths-based and distress scale called the Co-Valley Survey in fourth through twelfth grade. And uh this survey gives us some really important information about student strengths across a variety of different directions. It also measures student risk in in a really what we call a distress scale. It's not, it's not intended to diagnose students or conditions. It's really intended to give us information about what students may or may not need to follow up. In addition, it gives us some really important climate staff shots at our goals points in the year, so we know how our um initiatives that we're providing for teachers or staff across the school are impacting student experience. And really, you could even guess. And one uh engagement that we had with Stanford University last year at the Good Beach High School, and then uh looking forward to a partnership potentially with a middle school next year, is with Stanford's Challenge Success Program. And the goal of that program really is to uh in communities like ours where there's a strong emphasis on student performance, we often see that um that co-influence with this experience around anxiety and worry and depression. So we want our goals that school systems are uh as we implement them, support are well-balanced. And so there's there's a broad, the space framework describes um the elements that that Challenge Success partners with school districts to help improve, and then and that's everything from timing and scheduling. So so a lot of work on the the master schedule tutorial period is the districts look at the calendar. There's a lot of evidence and research around supporting those changes. We saw some information on project-based learning, which helped me do that kindergarten through twelfth grade. Try to have students have really relevant experiences throughout uh in their learning environments. We looked at other ways other than high-stakes, summative assessments that we give one time a year to measure all or nothing about a student's worth. But we're trying to measure students throughout their their uh learning opportunities to give them options to give us feedback about how well we're doing as teachers, and also to give students uh incremental feedback, so they know when they're working for their goals. Uh the E stands for uh parent education, and I'll shoot and I'll shift over to the next slide in a bit. And we had opportunity uh due to the great support of partners with with uh School Power previously, and our partnerships with PTA, generous support from from parents and families in the community that are close to the board. We've had Julie lift out, hand speak uh on her topic and how it raises an adult. That was in two thousand, the spring of two thousand and eighteen. Most recently, we had uh Dr. Jennings, co-founder of CF University, come to speak to parents and staff about the uh older motor medical care. She's worked on the co-founders of Challenge Success. Then we're happy to um uh you continue to announce that uh we're in the spring of two thousand twenty twenty, we have Mark Rappert from Illinois University come this week. Uh please save the date for March twelfth, twenty twenty. He could speaking to uh not only the parent education event that we made on emotional intelligence, but we'll also be working with our the leadership team and then our teaching staff on the next day during professional development. So uh thank you so much for all your support, and it's really critical work to create the essential conditions for working so well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Good evening, for President Vickers, for members, students and staff. So I'm like, I'm the Director of Human Resources for seven days. Uh so, good evening. Um so again, with human resources, it really, the employees are the lifeblood of the organization. So we do, we strive to recruit and retain the best and the most highly qualified staff who can support all students. So with that, we have currently a hundred and sixty-four certificates staff and a hundred and fifty-nine classified. We have a little video for you to share some of our latest additions.
I just want to let you guys know there's going to be some sound coming out of that TV, so it's gonna be nice.
Okay. Please have a look, Morrison, with technology. Thank you.
Good evening, President Vickers, members of the board. So I just gave you a couple updates on our four CLE project, and we we worked this summer on some rooms. We worked at Topolol for second grade, and you see the picture of one of the rooms there. Okay, uh top right. And then we worked on electives at the high school, and we're not quite done. We have one more room that's going to finish up this Friday, which is Terry Pellos' classroom. Uh but then we'll be finished with the electives there, and we worked at science at the high school, and the rooms were fantastic. We actually had about ten educators from Missouri come to visit these rooms uh last week, and they were super impressed. And what impressed me was the ownership the teacher had of the rooms, because they participated in the process. So they explained how they use their rooms, the purpose for different parts of the rooms, how they changed their rooms and transformed it. And that was really powerful, I mean, to see that. So this is the the status of four CLE, so the yellow is what needs to be done, that's what's left to do. The blue is what we've done. Uh these are the total numbers. So at the high school, we really have one class left, which is that Pellos' class, which will be done this year. The rest of the rooms we're working on is scheduled for in the summer, the following summer, to finish them out. Uh we do have the libraries that elementary schools support on, so that's what's kind of left. This um this is something my department's been working on since I got here, the the items in stripes. If you look at, if you look at like the stripes there, the that column, those are the ones that are uh from five years ago. So that's the first time we did the survey. So now we're in, five years later, and we've worked steadily on speed of support and quality of support for our teachers and staff. And so right now, if you if you kind of total it out, seventy-six percent of our folks are getting support within twenty-four hours if you add those up, which is remarkable even for a company, I think, uh to have that kind of a number. And the quality matches this, if you look at the quality numbers, they're very similar. So we we're really proud of this work, because if we can support these teachers in a timely way, they're more apt to use the technology. And that's what we've done in the classroom. Um and we've talked a little bit about AER, but thank uh thanks to Jason and Jason's help, Jason's uh for uh you know, kind of pioneering this idea of having a class that's a year-long class. Um uh it kind of fits in with these six factors for success for students that Gallup recognized. And one of those factors is a year-long class. The other factor is a mentor that cares about you, which would be a staff mentor that is paid by the district, so a staff, somebody who cares about them, which would be a little later in the year. And we have thirty-three kids, students that are taking this class, and they're paired up with an industry or expert mentor in the field they're studying. And those mentors, they're going to meet on the thirtieth for the first time at at breakfast. So that'll be an exciting event to to see that happen. I got to sit in on this class today for uh one of the sessions, and the students are really interested and excited, and they have these really fascinating questions that I I will share with you, because they're they're just awesome. And it's going to be great to see this program expand and see how the kids benefit from this this year-long study.
Thank you.
With that.
I just got one public comment there.
Yeah.
So this uh Sheri, this is sometimes a bit of a public comment on this, and it's just that I don't, one day I would communicate it.
These are working on just so embarrassing, this report talks down, I didn't realize it before. Hi, Sheri Morgan. Um I um also want to comment on start of school. Um I would have to totally agree with um Board Member Kelly and um about uh Dr. Allman and the high school and all the wonderful opportunities. Uh it's been a battle to cut them back, and I think just for the grace of something I'm not necessarily happy about, that some classes had to be canceled because of of bell schedules, uh it does help my daughter, so that's good. Um on the back of school, um in the um if is because constant improvement is our is our um one of our missions, um I would like to know what the percentage of students that were churning or missing in the first, this first month of school. Um as you guys had launched a new bell schedule, the high school launched a new bell schedule, while uh everybody was assured the students knew what was going on, I know the parents didn't. So um I would strongly encourage more communication, Dr. Allman and I already talked about that. Um it's something that um the prior administration was very, very big on, and it's something that this administration is not, and it's not acceptable. So um with that, I wanted to comment how wonderful it is to see how high our AP rates are prior to the calendar change. Um and if the calendar were what it was, we could have moved right into our project-based learning, which is also something that um Challenge Success is encouraged, because you can do a project after the holiday. They can do a project after APs. So some of this I'm just kind of calling out, because there's been a pattern over the last couple of years of ignoring your community, which brings me to my last point. Um because the school year started with um a lawsuit, and because the school year is starting without AV, um I want to comment on all of the things that you're passing the resolutions, and how amazing it is that resolutions are being passed after school was started and put in place without approval. But yet it's taken nine months to get AV equipment back up. And the argument is because we're not ABA compliant. Yet this district is very focused on our um ESL students, and it seems like anything that they need is done very quickly, which I support, and I think that's wonderful. However, I want to know why you think it's so okay to disservice your community by not having AV equipment? I would like to have sat at home and watched them follow the law, and that been here, I've got better things to do. Um and as far as the board and the lawsuit, I'd like to know why there's still even a consideration of a lawsuit when you look at some of the governance standards. Um it says, "The board expects its member to work with each other and the superintendent." Uh it says, "Act with dignity and understand the implications of demeanor and behavior." Calling somebody up publicly on the board that they're not qualified? So teach them, that's what we do, our students. Um understand that um governing a dignified and professional manner, treating everyone with humility and respect. So I think this still makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
So any other public comment on the Dr. Doris and the leadership team's presentation? Public comments?
No, it was excellent.
How was that?
Very thorough. I'm appreciative that you're inclusive in letting uh the people speak. But I know you did it to help your daughter also, but I think for me, that's important, that hasn't always been the case. You have a strong team.
Yes, we do, and for your support.
Uh our next information item, uh financial update, thanks.
Thank you, President Vickers. Uh not a lot to report on our financial update, considering that's the end of August, so revenues and expenditures are before tracking low. Um as expected, we are showing a positive growth in our fund balance when you look at the uh page four of twenty-two of the financial report. And we did have one transfer of two hundred and fifty thousand to our cafeteria at the last one. Now we will have more later in two point seventeen, a capital improvement program, a facility repair program. Because there's not a lot to report on the monthly financial, we wanted to use this opportunity to share with the board uh some information regarding our pension liability and the growth that we've experienced over the past few years. So if I could, I would like to walk through what historically um has been the impact to our our district, and then what we are projecting going forward. As you know, um we include the contribution on behalf of employees to their respective pension programs in our budget as an expenditure. So we will look at the individual um party partners, impacts, the total ground, and uh talk about our process, what budgeting and accounting for. You can see that back in two thousand fourteen, uh so we started experiencing the growth in the percentage of that we pay on behalf of the employees to their respective uh retirement programs. Uh the percentage itself is tied to their salary, so that's why you see such an increase in the cost. Um the highlighted blue rows are what are projected, the white rows are actions. So you can see that it will have more than doubled two thousand fourteen to two thousand and twenty-one. And again, these are lower projections, and those have changed, I'll talk a little bit about that later in the last slide. That was uh, let's go back. This is the uh California State Youth Retirement. And here we have our Classified Employed Association. So you can see that the percentage that we're paying on behalf of the employees more than doubles. But those financial impacts are accounted for in our budget, so we do budget those expenditures. So when we look at the total, um what we're seeing now in all projections is that it's starting to stabilize at that twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two level. Um but from two thousand fourteen through two thousand twenty-one, it's uh looking like projected growth of five and a half million dollars, the impact on our budget. So what do we do? As I mentioned, we have to account for it as an expenditure of both our current year and our multiple-year projections, but we have to submit to the county for approval. Um the assumed increase that we have, we keep track of the five-year old here, but we almost get a three-year to the county office. It did help this year that the state budget included a three-point-one-five billion dollar contribution of the Law and Education Fund to SIRS and FIRS that helped lower the growth or slow down the growth about a percent this year and then half a percent every year thereafter. Um but even when the the on-the-half percentage of our district was higher last year, we're still able to meet all of our financial obligations, so we are proactively budgeting for these liabilities. And I've passed this out, and I wouldn't expect you to read it, it's on that screen, but this is a school services in California, it's called Charge Boards, and they constantly update the rates, and you see that bottom of other planning factors that's table there, of what we currently assume in our budget. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Is there any public comment on this or public question?
I thank you for giving me something I asked for, and uh it's nicely laid out and uh and ready to take into consideration, because those costs have been needed as forever.
And this is an issue that when first came up and how much it contained what there was always a concern uh about districts leading this, and I know we're doing, we're doing well with it. I'm just curious, are the districts, how are the districts doing? I mean, across the state, is there such a concern that they wouldn't be able to carry out their budgets?
Well, in a cool, love-only environment, hostile living, trust-based only environment for other districts, that revenue increase is not enough to offset the cost increase directly associated with these. Well, in a cool-up-only environment, cost-living, trust-only environment for other districts, that revenue increase is not enough to offset the cost increase directly associated with these, these expenditures. So it's gonna be a problem, I think we're gonna talk about it, we're gonna hear about it more and more, and we are fortunate, um, thanks to our funding model, that we are able to meet it. But I think, I would say we, we just get proactive.
Is that one of the reasons the state put the money in to help?
Yes.
And we benefited from that also, we, it's for all districts.
That we're doing better than the, uh, our, our C's, but to retain our, our liabilities.
Yes. And I'm excited about forecasting all those graphs up here, the way you can look at it, and why they renewed it again, and hopefully you'll, um, additional ways to look at the data and.
Always look, always, yes.
Really appreciate it, definitely. And with, uh, forecasting, that helps you, you're able to start with, right?
Yes, well, it's nice to deal with a print report, and it all comes out of long range. Significant time saver.
Any other questions, Fickers? I think the, for taking the opportunity to give the information, it's pretty complicated, so it's good to refresh and we'll probably stay.
Oh, I have one question on the page, one by that.
One page, we're pretty far, and four pages three, and this one, and four pages three, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, uh, the top ten expenditures by object. Where are the, why aren't salaries on there?
My sense is it's sort of, there was a recent update to the software, and so it's just getting skipped in one of those tables, because it really shouldn't be the top top.
It should, that's what I was gonna say, it should be up there in the top.
You can see it reflected on the bottom, right?
I saw it there, I just didn't see it, so I wasn't sure it wasn't considered an object in the user stuff, right?
No, it is, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm like, excuse me.
I know, that's what I was gonna say.
Thank you also for putting that transfer. The next information item we have is a request that came from a board member of another district. Uh, review request for singing of a patriotic song of war needs. Uh, this was asked by, uh, John Briscoe, this, uh, Oceanview School District. And so this is how we bring it forward as a, uh, request, and it's information item, if there's any interest in, by our board in pursuing this. The resolution that is attached to this is, uh, what's prepared by him. So, is there a public comment on this item?
Yes, uh.
Let me just check this out.
Hello, my name's Jade Nicoletti, I'm a former Laguna Beach student, I'm currently going to Laguna College, aren't assigned. I'm gonna be reading the resolution today, and my mother's gonna be singing, um, the patriotic song.
So I just, that just, yeah.
Okay. Laguna Beach Unified School District of Orange County conducts regular meetings with the agenda scheduled for the beginning of each calendar year during the first organizational meeting. And Laguna Beach Unified School District of Orange County operates under state and federal law that includes singing and songs such as the official national anthem, the Star-Sangled Bad, uh, banner, in addition to many other unofficial patriotic songs. And, um, Laguna Beach Unified School District of Orange County serves their communities of Laguna Beach, where local community service organizations, or organizations regularly and gladly make the singing of patriotic song a regular part of their organizational life. An example would be Rotary International. And, uh, they must comply with California state law by providing at least one patriotic activity each day at school site for each student, which could, could, should, and often does singing. And regularly requires the students at school sites to learn and perform patriotic songs throughout the school year as a part of citizenship. Grade evaluations of each student performance. And, uh, the Laguna Beach Unified School District of Orange County Governing Board of Trustees, uh, should, let, lead by example and participate in patriotic songs such as Staff and Students Are Expected to Participate at Each School Site. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Laguna Beach Unified School District of Orange County hereby affirms the importance of patriotism in our schools and in our core meetings, as evidenced by the addition of patriotic songs as part of agenda of every regular board meeting in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. So, now my mother is gonna be singing, and she will play this.
Maybe, I'm not getting any wifi on my iPad, unfortunately. So, I just want to say thank you to, uh, my, both my children went to Almora and Thurston, and because of their, uh, very strong artistic, uh, programs that they have in schools, both of them ended up being, you know, good artists. And Jade is going to be going, it's her, her dream was to go to the, uh, Laguna Canyon Art and Design, and she will be doing that. I feel very grateful and lucky that we, her being part of such a wonderful school and, um, and district here. And, um, I have prepared to sing, uh, God Bless the USA by Greeley Greenwood, which is like the most popular song. Which is basically all about patriotism and being proud of our country, that we live in such a wonderful country that gives us options. And, um, my husband recently died, and he was a vet too, so I was singing this to him, but I, um, I can't get any wifi, so I'm not getting, uh, And they have good computer programs, and so, she's well-trained. Might have to try this without the music. I guess I'll just try it without the music. Um, at least still get the words, and this, the idea, really, it's a beautiful song written about him just being grateful for the soldiers that fought for this country so that we can have a beautiful country again, and goes like this. If tomorrow all the things were gone, I worked for all my life. And I had to start again with just my children and my life. I thank my lucky stars to be living here today. Cause the flag still stands for freedom, and they can't take that away. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today. Cause there ain't no doubt, I love this land, God bless the USA. From the lakes of Minnesota, to the hills of Tennessee. Across the plains of Texas, from sea to shine and sea. From Detroit down to Houston, and New York to LA. There's pride in every American heart, and it's time we stand and say that I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today. Cause there ain't no doubt, I love this land, God bless the USA.
Thank you, any other public comment on this item? Okay, we're fingers.
I have some comments.
Yes, well, this is when we decide, uh, whether this is something we want to bring back as an agenda item, or. Do you have comments or, or questions, or just comments?
I have.
Either one, sorry.
Comments, um, from people that contacted me that couldn't be here. Ed Hinke, who is the president of the, um, the president of Patriot State Parade this year, contacted me and wanted to come tonight, but at the last minute had another obligation. Uh, Jess Anne's also contacted me. She teaches the patriotic songs in our elementary schools, and this year, she said it's gonna be her twentieth year in the Patriot State Parade with the seventy-five or so kids singing patriotic songs. So she's very enthusiastic about this. I have been asked by Sandy Worthy, who, um, is the secretary for the Patriot State Parade, to invite everyone here, but especially young people, to the American Legion Post, um, on Veterans Day, which is actually a day off school. And right then, here at the American Legion Hall, they'll be having music at ten-thirty. And then they will have veterans there speaking, and they will have a program. And they would love it if people came and got a better understanding of our veterans and what they've done for us. The, the song that Eliza's singing, is sung every year at Almora, fifth grade, for the state fair, and it started right after nine-eleven. Kristy Montez, who's now retired, wanting the kids to sing that. And I think it's a great opportunity for the board to see, set an example, and it's a fun way to show our patriotism. The singing is good for all of us, even if you're like me and you don't sing well. It helps our, it helps our mental health, and fires up the right temporal rhythm. Um, it also lowers stress. So this could be an opportunity for students to engage in civic responsibility and showcase their talents. As we talked about, state law requires that we have daily patriotic exercises. Um, but it can be a patriotic song, doesn't have to be the pledge, can also be a patriotic poem. And it might be kind of cool for the kids to decide what they wanted to do each morning. Um, I wonder if anybody knows how many vets we have in Laguna? I, I don't, I don't know either, but it seems like this would be a great way to reach out to them. Those who talk to me would really like to see more citizens in our schools, and this isn't all citizens, but it creates that about. When you're all singing, which see the shine and see together, you think about that. Or you think about, in California, Here I Come, the Golden Gate. Um, it just brings us together and is a happy thing, and so I think we should consider it.
Thank you. Um, patriotic songs are wonderful, I love them. I'm the daughter of a Marine from thirty-two years, um, I've lived in ten military bases. I think that patriotic songs are part of our students today, I don't think it's the right fit in our meeting, I think our meeting is meant to do the business. And I think it's inherent that we are patriotic people, because we are citizens who ran for office and volunteer our time for the love of this community and the love of these schools. Um, I do know that at PTA, when I was president, I had many kids come in and do performances, and we celebrate that. I would like to spend our time honoring our students, their accomplishments, and our staff, that would be my turn.
Sure.
Hi, Jade, what you said, and I think the pledge will change this.
I just, I'm hearing your comments, Emma Perry, I'm a little concerned that you were referencing things about students doing the poems and things, and I think this resolution, this content was directed only to us and the board doing this in our meetings. So I think some of those other ideas were, seem to hit more on, uh, curriculum elements today, as on being that, students choosing things. I just, um, just was noticing that, whether we look at it or not, to unify this and spell throughout the.
There's mission going throughout that resolution.
But also, this res, we're not, some questions to mind that indicates that perhaps we were not meeting these obligations, but by, we are, is that correct? Would that be correct? Okay. For me, and I'd like also, before I make comments, students, our student reps, do you have a, a comment on this item?
Um, I understand how it could potentially not be, uh, fitting for the occasion, but if the option was open for students to volunteer, if they did feel the need or want to sing, um, that would be a nice way to get students involved, because I know we have a lot of talented singers, and that could be a nice place for them to, uh, showcase their talent.
That's now to be a different, a different item than what this is, this is actually more of a student, and the, I, the premises it was presented was that we require students to do this, and therefore we should be doing the same thing. And we say the pledge, and I, I agree with what Member Ruff said, that this is basically a business meeting, and I agree. But I, and agree, if students, if you want to include more student presentations.
Right, sure.
We can do that, but, um, and I know that when this was presented, that, um, for Mr. Briscoe, his own district is not wanting to do this. And I thought it was interesting that he's, he was saying we could be the first district that would do it, but it didn't, um, it didn't happen in Oceanview, so.
Could it be something that is only done maybe when we do have students here? And have the students sing together with the students?
I'm not interested. That's not, that's not what this is about, I have a board. It's a board meeting, it's about some board work. But we're, we're talking about how we could. But that's not what this resolution is, this resolution is that we are going to sing.
This needs a majority of the five members to bring it back as an agenda item, so they can place. That's what this, that's how this comes to life.
So could, it could be brought back in another form, is that what you're saying?
If the majority of the board wants to bring it as an agenda item.
Yes, but unless one is written for us to sing.
Well.
It's a joke.
But, but we can, we can write it around, we can write it different.
Okay, what was your objective?
My objective?
You want more student, you want more students coming to the board, or?
Well, when the students come, I think it would have set off a really nice feeling if we all sang together. And I think it's a good show.
Well, if I was, if a student comes in to make a presentation, I would not want to join them, but that, to me, would be to initiate their, the performance that they get to us.
Well, no, I mean, if we're giving out awards, say, for destination imagination, we have a lot of students here. We're setting example, we're singing with them, we all know the song together. And I think that is basic in our, you know, in our love of music and being a community, that we all have something in common.
And we also have pledge locations, we have a lot of common practices.
I don't think it has.
We've not sung Destination of Imagination's Come.
No, oh, I know, we haven't, I'm just saying, when any group of students come, we could sing with them.
I think that's, for me, I'm just gonna, that distracts from the honoring of the students' accomplishments. If all of a sudden, five board members, who most of them don't know us unless they're connected to my own children, we join them, it seems to dilute their work. I, I don't, I support doing the pledge, I support being a strong American and having lots of pride, I do. But I don't think us joining our students or adults or whoever is hearing the song is, has a function in a business meeting of the school district, that, that is my.
I guess I think right after the pledge, like it's, you know, a classroom, you do the pledge, you sing. It gets everybody a feeling of community and trust, and I think that's all good. And it wouldn't take away from their presentation, it would just be right after the pledge, you sing a song, takes about two minutes, but I.
I, I don't have an interest. I I don't have an interest in that, but it's it's the consensus of.
Right. He has last to be informed.
Thank you.
Thank you, there's a thought.
Uh we have action items to see being moved to item seventeen, approval of memorandum of. Approval of memorandum of understanding between college and career advantage CCA and the Good Beach Unified School District to employ district and CCA teachers to offer career technical education CTE elective courses at the Good Beach High School during the twenty nineteen twenty twenty school year.
Thank you. So this is our annual memorandum of understanding to CCA. And it identifies the courses that we will host on campus for the for this current school. So we're asking for your approval.
Could public comment on this item? Motion please.
I so moved.
Need more discussion.
It's nice that we have more courses on our campus. I think that's a great improvement because most of, a lot of the courses are down in the cafestra.
I saw Carolyn mention. Student votes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Carol's in late.
I know. We have action item eighteen, approval resolution number nineteen dash zero seven, ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials for twenty nineteen twenty twenty for education code section six zero one one nine. Step favor or?
Thank you. Um so this is our, also a manual required by ed code, resolution attesting to the sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials within the first eight weeks of the school year.
Public comment? See, there's more questions? Just motion?
So moved.
Second.
Need discussion?
I checked with the students.
What's this? Okay, this is vocal. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Fickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Monden is. She's occupied. How do you say that? Shall we have her move on? We're going to another resolution, Carol?
Oh, yes.
On textbooks, on the textbook available.
Oh, okay.
Um agenda item nineteen, approval of resolution nineteen dash zero eight, support for national bullying prevention month. Mr. Ward?
Yes, we've been doing this the last couple of years. And we believe it's a great opportunity for us to highlight the importance of prevention intervention related to bullying. So we ask that you adopt this resolution and then share with staff.
So request from Cherry Morgan, this keep on this item?
Hi, Cherry Morgan. Um so I noticed um to pass a resolution, but I wanted to address that before you guys pass it. Because I know that you passed this resolution because it's a role like that one to promote non-bullying environments. Uh so let's start with the board, with the board members. Um I can't tell you that I've talked to several people that has not been to a board meeting before or have only come to a couple. And even sitting here tonight, it is very clear, Ms. Fickers, I'm talking to you, that you are speaking poorly um to another board member, because it's not the same tone that you use when you ask Mr. Kelly if he had any questions about the about the flag. Just the tone and the edge. So you do need to be aware of that as constituents that voted for you. I suggest to maybe take a step back and review the tapes and listen to yourself. That's what they're there for. Um then also, as far as bullying, I think you guys need to look at your bylaws and I think you need to change them. I think you need to include that the board should not be involved in bullying. Board members, um you have different policies. Uh one of them is nine zero zero five. You talk about it, it says ensure opportunities for a diverse range of views in the community to inform board deliberations. If you're not letting people, um if you're constantly changing the bylaws to be broad enough that you can do what you want when you need to do it, then and you're allowing one member to, or you're making one member abstain from certain circumstances. You are not giving the community, you're not allowing a diverse range of views. This very lawsuit threat is because you're not allowing diverse views. And it's, the the room was filled with people because they don't, they want to offer diverse views. Um hey, you won't, you've been caught, you've commented that supporters, that all the supporters that support do are Republicans, like it's a crime. And I think it's on the tape somewhere. I think that's what I heard. And I guess it's, I find that really interesting because I'm actually a registered Democrat, but I'm probably leaning more towards independents. So just identifying supporters as something or someone is bullying. Uh number three on this says recognize and respect differences of perspective and style on the board and among the staff, students, parents, and the community. Okay, all, a lot of these bylaws are very focused on um the the students, which is being, you know, the board doesn't make sense. But there's things that left um the community. The board bylaws nine thousand, the governing board's been elected by the community. The board shall ensure the districters' response to the valued beliefs and priorities of the community. When this room is full, they're usually objecting to things that you guys are doing, especially the three of you, the majority, that have taken on this power trip. And I can't even, if you tell you how often and people ask what is going on with the board? Because they've assumed that I would know. I think I had no idea what is going on in my head. So I hope this glassy wakes you guys up.
So any other public comment on this resolution? Need more questions?
Questions?
Yes.
Uh does this include cyberbullying or is this?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
It starts right off with that. You, did they have a copy of this? Did you have a copy of it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Um the third.
We actually added that last year.
The third whereas it doesn't include that.
And just to note, there's been some potential recent legislation, we'll see, we'll hope, we'll expand kind of the expectation of schools later to education and prevention of bullying, center of bullying in particular. So uh that will be forthcoming, I expect, from the state. Should include the board under it.
So I have a click. So diversity is not being diverse to, sorry, to break laws. Diversity of follow, not diversity of sharing. Which is what this lawsuit, potential lawsuit is.
Okay, we're talking about this.
Excuse me, excuse me, this is a board time to discuss.
Okay, just stay on topic.
Having breaking laws.
It's like we're supposed to.
Yes, so that's what, yeah, so that's what the, I'm just saying that diversity didn't include that. What diversity does mean diverse to bullying, you're breaking the law, I don't want breaking.
Is this about bullying? Isn't that what we're talking about?
Just clarification.
Motion please.
So moved.
Second. You have any further board discussion? Students, you have any discussion you want to add? You are, you have to turn it outside the board.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it's included with the bullying.
Okay. Resolution, the vocal, please. Drew?
Yes.
Fickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Norrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bydow? Um item twenty, agenda item twenty, approval of resolution nineteen dash zero nine, designation of representative and alternate for Western Orange County Workers' Compensation Joint Hours of Training.
Thank you. So due to changes we've made in our administrative structure, um it necessitates us to bring this resolution forward to change our assigned board member to the workers' comp JP board. We have a voice at the table in the the fiscal solvency of that board and it's really, it's really an important role. So we're proposing that the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services serve as the representative since it is primarily fiscally related and then the Director of Community Resources would serve as the alternate.
Public comment on this item? Questions? Motion please?
Second.
Second? All right, um. Board discussion?
Good choices.
Good choices. This is a resolution, you do? No. Yeah, just a, just a couple of.
No, yes, I'm sorry, it's vocal, I think it's.
Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Fickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Norrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Kelly?
Yes.
Agenda item twenty-one, approval of memorandum of understanding of capistrata unified school district to provide orientation and mobility services to U B, U L B, U S T students. And this is Ms. Houston.
Thank you. So this is an NOU that we bring forward when we need orientation mobility services. It's a low incidence population, which means very few students need these services. So we're fortunate to be able to program a capistrata to be able to try to provide those services to us.
Public comment? Need more questions? Motion? Second. Second. Any discussion? Drew?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, curious by vote. Agenda item twenty-two, approval, learning ally, ally? Incorporated three-year license agreement to provide library of audiobooks for students with reading impairments in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you. So this is a free year license agreement to be paid in annual installments. It's a program that we have used for a few years and they changed the licensing agreement. So now we're required to buy site licenses, but the good news is it provides more access to students who may need it. It's for for both students who might be struggling or special education students. So it can be used with with any particular student or group of students. Um and so we are bringing this forward for your.
Public comment on this item? More questions?
About how many students in here use this?
Um I think we put in the in the backup, the I know at Almoro, they've used learning ally with fifty students. Um but I would need to look into seeing how many students, I think it's been, because the licensing has changed.
Right.
It's it's been more individualized, so but we could provide that.
But it sounds, it sounds pretty significant.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's very reasonable cost.
And you had the Almoro data, have you used it at the other sites?
We have, but again, it's been student specific.
Student specific, okay. Um it's a great. Motion please?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Drew?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, curious by vote. Uh agenda item twenty-three, approval, Dr. Chad Mayberry, Mayberry is designated for South Orange County Regional Consortium, Adult Education Consortium Program, Assembly Bill eighty-six.
Thank you. So we are proposing to designate for Mayberry as our designated to this adult ed consortium.
Public comment? Need more questions?
Great choice.
Motion please?
Second?
Okay, any discussion? Thank you. Drew?
Yes.
Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, curious by vote. Uh our agenda item twenty-four, approval purchase of audio visual recording system to live stream organics with live closed captions from Swaget Productions LLC at a cost not to exceed ninety-six thousand. And since uh who's presenting this?
Mike's presenting.
Okay, oh, there you are.
Thank you, President Victor Fickers members of board. We uh thank you for considering this item. On the August thirteenth meeting, you approved the consensus to inform with live streaming. And you wanted to include the closed captioning along with that, which is required. So uh we waited uh to find out what board management system we would choose, uh which is another item that's coming up on the agenda. And that decision made us, drove us to find a product that was very compatible with that. So one that they would work hand in hand with. So that drove us to to look at this product, which is called Swaget. It has, it includes four cameras, it's it's just redoing everything in this room. Also includes a backup uh system so that there's a local backup. So we put in like this card and we get a backup here at the D O, but it also streams it out over over the live. Um it includes a switcher that can be accessed remotely. So in the case that an attorney can't make it, there would be an opportunity if we notify them advance, uh two days in advance, to do, uh they can actually switch it for us. So that's something that is a paid service that they offer. And um so the first part is the system hardware, if you look at the budget impact. And then there's two items that are ongoing, and that's for the archived and streamed, which is eighty-three forty at the bottom. And then eleven thousand two hundred and eighty for the real time closed captioning. So those are the two ongoing fees that are related to the product. And uh that's about it.
Please public comment on this, yes, we did.
Hi, good evening. Um thank you so much for finally getting this on the agenda nine months after it was brought up or it broke. I think it's disappointing to see how long this is taking, given how quickly you're passing the rest of the resolutions and how quickly they came forward. Those don't total the ninety-six thousand, but the two resolutions that you're voting on following are a third of that at around thirty thousand. So I don't know if you guys are putting a value on what takes a long time to pass or not. I mean, I'm just speculating, but this is ridiculous. So the good reason why, the good thing about having an AV equipment in here is that people can watch live what's going on in the meeting, in the meeting. And I would have to bet that things are going to be a little different. I don't know, we'll see, because you can go back and reference the videos. Um but there was a couple of things that it will be good to have the AV for because it will allow people to watch to see if, according to board bylaw nine zero one two, a majority of the board shall not outside, although this was a little bit more on the personal records of us, uh authorize meetings using a series of electronic communications of any kind directly or through intermediaries intermediaries to discuss, deliberate, or take action. You are in violation of that when I receive your text. So not me, if it's somebody else in my family, from somebody in your family, and it was board related, it's not acceptable. And I have evidence, so don't shake your head. I don't know why you guys were involved in a lawsuit. I don't know why you feel you need to justify it and clarify what it is, because that's also your opinion. It's not infound as happening or not. So the other policies that are covered that the AV will be very good for people to see is that it's important, according to bylaw nine thousand, establishing adhering to a standard to a responsible governance. Last, the last item was not about what the lawsuit was about, it was about um um I don't know.
Bullying. Oh, bullying?
Yes, bullying, thank you. See, my brain is a sieve right now. Um the other item that will be good for people to watch is arguing about holding board policies. And based on some of the things that are going on, how you're treating members of the board that don't agree with your opinion, um you're bullying them. And and that comes back to what I said before, ensuring your opportunities for a diverse range of opinion. And there was last one more that the community should be able to watch. Board policy, I'm not sure, two nine zero zero five, nine thousand nine zero one two. Providing community leadership and advocacy. Okay, people have come in here and said they don't want the way you guys are leading the board to be in our community because they want equal voice. You want our students to see that there's, that a board can just can disagree and work together. And you keep hanging on to this one item like somebody's broken some confidentiality, yet your attorney sat here and said what he had done that triggered what you think is a violation of bylaw. And that's still an opinion, it's not even a fact. And Mrs. Morgan, you are welcome for bringing more policy numbers because I know that you like that.
Time is up, please. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, thank you.
Questions?
More questions?
Did you ask, did you talk to other boards that have this and have a successful experience with this company and with this equipment?
Yes, I talked to Santa Clara County Office and they had a very successful experience with kind of the closed captioning was well for them. Uh the the company was very good at installation and completion of the project and the support's been fantastic for them.
Okay.
The other uh group I talked to was Laverne City, the city of Laverne. And they also said good, great things about the company and how well prepared they are. And they're actually doing the, they're actually doing, every meeting is done remotely in their.
Oh.
So it's interesting. So yeah, the the experience has been good with other other government districts.
Great, thank you.
Are there guarantees on the equipment? Um the standard guarantees are in there in the contract, so it's like the warranties are usually a year. It depends on the part of the rack. Everything has a little bit different warranty as far as the the service agreement. But um the good news is that this product has, is a little more robust as far as to be not too technical, but it's running on like a server version of Windows and it's running as a service, so it's actually. and it's running as a service, so it's actually much better than what we have now as far as like the, the technical aspects of it. I think will be more stable, more efficient. But I can give you the warranties, because they're all just included in the contract. I'll make sure we get.
What's the cost of someone dialing in?
It was, I don't have the, it was. I can remember an hourly.
Okay, but hourly rate?
Yeah, hourly rate, it was a little over a hundred dollars, in between a hundred and two hundred dollars an hour, I can't tell you the exact amount. But it would be an hourly rate and like I said, you needed to tell them in advance, because they have to prepare somebody. They said also that there's some technical knowledge to do that. So we'd have to kind of walk them through some of the, you know, the positions of cameras and things like that. They'd have to kind of get a feel for that. So, and then after that, if you do more than once, they get better producing that.
And then if the warranties are around a year or so?
Yes.
Does that mean every year we're going to be replacing things?
What's this?
I wouldn't think so. The products that they're using are pretty like industry standard products, they're really very good quality. I'm not expecting to replace this later.
Okay, how often do you think we'll replace it? I know, that's what you said, did you hear? And so I was curious about, when you look at this, that's major census equipment, how, how long would you expect it to last?
It's hard to say exactly, but usually like with products like this, like our cameras, that the surveillance cameras, which are outside, have lasted, this will be the fifth year, going on a fifth year. So, and those are outside cameras, and these cameras have lasted well too. The product's been fairly consistent. We did have one power supply go bad on us, but those things happen with technology, so you can't be perfect, but.
What else was trying to get a sense of?
Yeah, I would say that five, four to five-year range is kind of where we're at, but it's probably not everything. It would just be certain items that you might have to fix. Usually with technology, like if it's dead on arrival, then that's usually when the problems start happening. If it's been there a while, it's, it takes a while for it to go. So it's usually within that, as it gets older, that fifth year. Remember the technologies all will be changed in five years.
Yeah. So. So Anna Karen still looking? Good, good. I think I also remember it, because all meetings are going through this now. There is a lot of development in that area and Google is about ready to come up with something new.
As far as closed captioning?
Uh-huh.
I'm not aware of Google, but we did look at a shareware product that was for closed captioning, wasn't ready for this kind of a meeting. But, but it, there is, I think you mentioned last time, hey, this is a developing area and it's going to improve. And I think that's very true. I think there will be probably some abilities to have closed captioning without paying a person to do it in the future.
Right.
It's really critical. Audio is really good, so we are replacing your mics, that's one of the systems we're going to do. But I think you're right, there are going to be paying improvements.
Things coming up. I did look and I saw a lot of the Swaget proposals, just like ours, except they had a different name on the top. And some had three cameras, some had one. They said one camera, you can't really zoom in on somebody, so that wouldn't be very good. But I was a little bit concerned. I don't know if you saw the Overland Park City Council argument. They had gotten Swaget and they misinterpreted, and I don't think you guys would do this, but just a warning. They misinterpreted the monthly costs as one-time costs. So it was a huge amount that they, and it was, they had to go back and try to redo things. So our, our costs, that we call our hard costs here, you know, that's something over forty-four thousand dollars for the camera cables, et cetera. That's definitely one time, not.
Yeah, on the top section.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
So they were, they were paying fifty-one thousand.
They, okay, that's more than we were paying, but they, they're breaking it down, the last two items, the eight thousand and eleven thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Those are actually monthly costs, but you can pay upfront for a year.
Okay.
So that's, those are the two items that were the monthly ongoing costs. But I'll confirm that now that you said.
Right, that's, that's what I understood, and I didn't get worried when I saw.
Yeah, maybe, maybe where you do, I'll find out.
Any other questions? Motion please?
I'm so good.
Second?
And now we have more discussion, go away. Any discussion?
I'm quite pleased that it's integrating with online agendas. That's been my request since I've started, just to reduce some paper accessibility easier. So I like that it's kind of marrying together and it looks like Swaget works to that really well. I just think the name Swaget is so funny. It reminds me of Rent a Swag from Parks and Recreation.
Okay.
Sorry, Anna Karen, that's a bad TV show we watched. So I like the integration. I'm looking forward to online documents and things like that, so thank you for working hard on that. And I do know that we were waiting a while, because the technology wasn't catching up. They had online documents and agendas and they were stinky, not working effectively, so we kind of had to wait it out to the technology improve. So I do want to state that, that was one of the holdups, was waiting for that integration.
Yeah, so we've been down for, for live streaming for the last five months. And our goal obviously is to get this equipment replaced in a fairly rapid fashion. If you look on page one eighty-four, the agenda that actually highlights yearly and monthly costs related to the ongoing, the yearly managed service package pieces that are there, which the, there are overages that for some reason here to go over our closed captioning amount, which is based on a three-hour average per meeting. So again, they took our twenty-five, they brought it forward and said, this is roughly, we've looked at how long your meetings were, and they gave us that as their, their hourly for closed captioning. And again, if they were to do something in addition, there's the cost break down as well, so. And then on the next page, I think it tells the hourly for, for the bottom bit also. So it's a prediction, okay, good.
Any other discussion? Will we have someone watch this to see how it goes? In other words, they're just in here and then someone, so that we don't get a call from someone who says, you know, the closed captioning was like way behind or it was off. Is that when we start doing this, when we have, maybe we'll like go to the back room and watch this?
Quality control.
One thought I had was putting it on this TV out here, the live stream. It'll be delayed, but one option we could do is put it there so that the people in the room can see the, the closed captioning.
Right. I guess that's what you're, like you said, our, was our.
Like quality control, yeah.
So we're going to, we will be doing that, so that we.
I think we can do that with this TV.
Not necessarily here, but I mean, just our people will verify that it's working.
Yeah, I mean, it's a live person, so I think there's a huge advantage versus what you see on the regular television, which closed captioning on regular television is not a live, an image.
Right. Right.
It's a computerized system. So that's where you get all of those errors, so.
Autocorrect.
Yeah, all sorts of errors. So this part of, again, the, the board, you know, was to make sure that we're doing it, if we're going to do it, do it right. And so we expect that this will accomplish that. But to your point, yeah, we will review it and make sure that they are accurate.
And will there be any part of this system that will allow us to better track use?
Yes, the, the system has accurate statistics, it's not a snapshot.
That's wonderful, great.
So we will get good stats out of it.
Even though I, I recognize that times have changed and even if it's a small number of people, there's an expectation to have this available. Yes, so it's, so I still would like to know if that perhaps increases use or that we get an accurate, more accurate reflection. Any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Drew?
Yes.
Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries by vote. We have agenda item twenty-five, which is approval of agreement for contracted services with diligent corporations for Board Docs Pro, a web-based service for online agendas for an annual recurring cost of ten thousand.
Yeah, as mentioned in the last item, the Board Docs works seamlessly with Swaget. And we sat through a couple of different demonstrations. One that we did reach out to was CSBA Agenda Online. And they, their new product is not ready, and in fact, they told us such. So if it does become ready at some future point, we wish to reengage, then we can. But at this point, we believe that Board Doc Pro is the best to move forward with. And we have achieved client list in the weekly. This last week of all the districts throughout, bunch of counties was really inspired, the group account, like they're using it. And we've, those that are using it, we've had positive feedback from them.
Any public comment on this? More questions?
Since this is going to save time, right?
Theoretically.
Yes.
Theoretically, we, we, I know some other, other boards are able to get their agendas and so on earlier. Could we be able to?
I don't know that we would be able to get them earlier. Friday is, you know, it's Friday.
Well, I heard, I hear districts would have meetings on Tuesday, get them on Thursday.
We can do our best to try to get them on Thursday, but I can't guarantee that.
I just thought maybe that this would be so much easier than that would.
We haven't used it yet, so it's hard for me to commit to anything until we've had an opportunity to train on it and actually use it. Then we can assess, we, our goal is to try to get training if you approve it tonight. Training in December, there will also be training for you. There will also be, there's going to be some hard copy potential if you'd like it. But we also believe it would be best interest to get away from hard copy to digital copy. So there'll be some training that will need to be around that. There is still the opportunity to do hard copy for those that might wish to have that, and that's fine. But then we're going to have to also purchase some additional computer systems for you, so that you have portability, that are going to be a little more user-friendly than what we've provided you so far. So we'll take those back, redistribute those out, and I've been talking to Mr. Morrison about options for you.
So we're going to have a learning curve?
We'll have a learning curve, that's how I totally figured it out.
Of course, even the public access and the clicking.
The clicking is going to be fantastic. That's going to be useless and honestly being able to access it with Swaget, to click on things and find comments from it. It's seamless. And they do that, marrying Swaget works and they just do it themselves. They take it and index it, which we don't have to do, and it's really, really nice feature for us.
Oh, that's great.
But yeah, we're looking forward to getting there with online agenda. It's been, we've been waiting for CSBA. That's one of the things that we've been trying to hold out for, because they kept telling us, we're almost ready, we're almost ready. But we've been in contact with those that have been using CSBA online and they've been hearing that for the last year and a half. And.
So maybe after the learning curve, it can be ready.
Then we can talk about it, Thursday.
We'd be optimistic.
Okay, yeah.
That seems like a nice, nice conversation.
And with things like this for presentations, could they then be added within, so like we don't have to take a photo of them and add them elsewhere?
Yeah, it'll be in as an attachment.
Could it be as an attachment? Yeah, I don't mean originally as an attachment, but as an attachment, or you can then write on that.
Assuming we get the presentations in to the, in time. That's always the question, sometimes have to lock them in.
Oh, and that's fine too, just not like the ones that maybe you'd have a headcount.
Yeah, that's our goal, is to try to get them done at headcount, but it's busy.
Oh, totally.
A meeting every year that you couldn't get at this time period, it gets locked or not.
A second? Thank you. Any further board discussions? Drew?
Yes.
Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries by vote. Last agenda item, board member requests for items for future meeting, board member requests for information, and we have a request for public comment on this item. Sherry?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to address all of these different items, excuse me. I think that it would be beneficial to the board to consider putting on the agenda a review of electronic communication for the board. And I would not begin to know how to approach this as far as what should be addressed, but it does say in the Board Bylaws nine zero zero, or nine zero one two, that board members may use electronic communications to discuss matters that do not pertain to district business, regardless of members, of number of board members participating. It also says, examples of permissible communication concerning district business include, but not limited to, designation of board meetings, agendas and agenda packets, reports of activities, and the superintendent reminders regarding meeting dates and places. I have not made any public requests of records, but I know others have, and I know they're on the website and you can go through them and look at them. And so somebody has requested public records and then directed my attention to that, to take a look at them and see what's going on. And there are multiple communications between board member Norrington and superintendent, one of which he had even asked how to respond to a board member and basically cut and paste the answers from Mrs. Norrington to Mrs. Perry. And I do believe that would be a violation, because you are acting as the intermediary of communication from one to the, to the next. I mean, one could certainly consider that. That would be a legal opinion. And as a member of the community, I think that it's appalling that there is any kind of treatment like this to the board, because none of you are perfect. You all make mistakes. And best thing is, is that we can all learn from them, but the problem is twice keep creating and keep putting it out there. So perhaps electronic communications needs some adjustments on that, which should be put on the, on the next agenda. And you might want to review nine zero five, because that's how many times I refer to it tonight. So it should at least be up for review and discussion. And lastly, I think you should reevaluate bullying, because one of your governance standards talks about, it all talks about respectability. One of the ones on the role of the board, board policy nine hundred or nine thousand, it says, um, accountability to the public performance of the district school. I know that's the schools in itself, and fortunately, we have amazing staff, so I will say you guys do that very well, because they rock this district. But I don't think as a board, you guys are making this look, that can make me look awful, because again, people talk to me all the time. And you know that, because that's why you're used to having me on committees and you don't have, because right now, in this moment, I am opposed to what you're doing. So therefore, the invitations have decreased, which would be retaliation to some degree, in my opinion. How can I see this?
Can you take? Okay, whatever. Start with you, do you have any requests of any can be considered forward?
I want to thank you for doing the WOS report. That's one of mine, that was the retirement. My third one is campus security.
That, that report is coming.
Okay, I know there's lots going on, but that's just in my three themes.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I was at the city council meeting. It was, well, it was disappointing to learn that we have the highest vaping rate in Orange County, twenty-nine percent. The state average is only twenty, ten percent. Dr. Keller was there, Marty Bedd, Mitty Hopkins. The students did a fabulous job presenting to city council, and then city council asked wonderful questions. And they really listened to the students' answers and they changed their point of view. And they let the students know what a difference they have decided to change and prohibit the flavor, the flavors. So it just shows how powerful students can be and what a terrific job they did, making a difference for our whole community and for students upcoming, upcoming years. My question is, what are our next steps? I mean, what are we doing as a board, as a community about the vaping? We, where, where, you know, there's a lot even at Thursday. And I read that they're considering, they should be talking to upper elementary students about it too. And that teaching kids that it's bad for you doesn't get hacked, that, that doesn't help. It has to come more from students and students have to figure out a way to handle this. And where on the campus do students vape is one of the questions. I'm, I'm looking, because I'm very concerned. I mean, you know, we've all read about the recent deaths and it's, they're being advertised to like the old Camel commercials and.
So summarize your request for.
My summary, okay.
Update on what we're doing.
I want, yes, I was like a plan and what we're doing. I know what other districts are doing, I don't need that.
No.
My power plan and what we're doing.
When my students present like they did in the city council, it's, it's concise report.
I think it's more than that, so if that didn't happen, our district, we know we're doing it right.
It also really like technology, Mitty Hopkins.
I don't have anything except I'm sorry that Sherry left, because I had requested a legal opinion to clarify electronic communications.
It's in the works.
Okay, thank you very much.
I checked on the message.
That's it.
And that would be in all areas.
That was on the, that, just that we all follow the rules, we understand the clarity of it, yeah?
I think it's different.
For transparency.
I can see it different, what's reflected in it than what she's stating. I think she's talking about post. I think she's talking about personal issues. But you're asking a legal opinion on use as a board member.
Yes. Which is still important.
Yes, it, yeah. That's what our pulse and our fire is expressed.
That's what our job is to follow the policy.
Right, okay. Terrible. So I'd like to ask for uh what should you, Sherry? So.
Second?
Drew?
Yes.
Board all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie Spivey, eight minutes. Our next meeting is Tuesday on October eighth. I just made a reading. Have. Thank you.